Good evening. I'd like to welcome and thank everyone for being here for the January 10th Committee of the Whole Meeting, and the first order of business would be the roll call.
Bartlett.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Kittleson.
Here.
Swadley.
Here.
Boersma.
Here.
Johnson is absent. Lawrence.
Here.
Miaske is absent. Engelberger.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Trul.
Here.
O'Connor.
Here.
There are ten elders present.
Okay, thank you Lana. So what we have in front of us tonight is, this is a continuing discussion from a previous Committee of the Whole Meeting. We were going to take this up on the 26th, but since we didn't have any council agendas for tonight, the mayor had asked that we have a Committee of the Whole instead to try to resolve this issue about the Highway 138 access. In the packet, there is the same resolution that we had in there previously, and I know I had a conversation with Planning Director Scheel, and he can give us kind of an overview of where we're at and how we got here. And then I know that Alder Person Trul had made the motion to table this item, so I'd like to give him an opportunity to speak if he wishes. And it looks like we have representatives from Forward Development Group here tonight, so if we have any questions, hopefully we can get them answered. So I guess I'd like to begin with Director Scheel.
Thank you. I've got a series of slides that I think will help just provide some background material, but I'll start with an overview of really where we're at and where things are at least proposed. People will recognize in the bottom right-hand corner is the commercial center in essentially the full build-out concept. We have the roundabout that enters into Kettle Park Way. We have a right-in, right-out in front of the Walmart facility. We have a delivery entrance that is only right-in, right-out for the rear portion of the facility here. And this shows the anticipated connection location of Oak Opening Drive. It also shows Jackson Street as now constructed with signalization planned to occur this spring and summer. It also shows the location where one of the conditions indicates the need to install signals at Deer Point, Robie Road. This, in essence, shows the layout of the preliminary plat as approved with a bunch of conditions. The park here, Oak Opening continuing north-south here. So with that, I'll just continue through a series of images, but if you have questions along the way, I'm certainly open to that. Maybe on this screen, it would be helpful for me to highlight, at least one question came in about access for emergency vehicles if they could utilize Kettle Park Way. And actually, Police Chief is here and he can speak to this, but emergency services have essentially full reign to utilize whatever avenue is necessary to attack whatever issue is before them, but they certainly could utilize Kettle Park Way all the way north-south. They could use the access point off of 51 into this area, and either the right-in, right-out for the public, or even the service entrance to the rear portion of the facility if necessary. Exhibit C, or the next few slides are actually going to be a series of exhibits that were found as part of the preliminary pre-annexation agreement. And this one also doubles as an exhibit that was found in the detailed neighborhood plan that was adopted, and the comprehensive plan that adopted that neighborhood plan. In here, this is Highway 138, and this shows potential access points. Shows one at this point, one here, another one here. This one was anticipated to be another commercial parcel behind the commercial center that did not materialize, and it also shows Oak Opening. There are certainly circles around Oak Opening Drive. There isn't any notes that indicate what type of control is at any of these points, but I highlight that there are locations, five actually, that are anticipated or shown in this concept plan, in addition to the Jackson Street and Oak Opening Deer Point Drive. This plan also shows the concept for neighborhood development farther south from 138. Shows this being, in our mind, an important connection for the neighborhood connection to the south. This shows where Milwaukee Street, in this concept, would likely connect in some fashion back to 138.
Rodney?
Yes.
Good question, again.
Sorry.
At that time, in terms of identifying all of those potential openings, do you have any, how many actual driveways existed at that point?
Yeah, I think that's a good question. The area that encompasses the commercial center, the area, if you will, east of the pond, I believe there was three driveway access points east of the pond prior to that area. So from this area east, there were four, or three existing driveway points.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Mr. President, I'm the one who asked the question. There's two questions that I asked in my email to you Rodney, and basically I'm just going to say, I don't know the answers to two questions. One is whether the DOT would support the option of right-in, right-out, and what is being proposed tonight. And the second question is whether in emergency situations, can vehicles enter the development using Walmart access as we are restricted with points of entry and exit? And those were two large questions of mine, and one of them tonight was answered. And I think it sounds like they could use any of the access points. The question that I follow up with is whether, like emergency vehicles, like a fire truck, could get through on those commercial entrance and exits at basically three Walmart sites, as I-
Absolutely.
Those are large enough and wide enough, and not terribly heavy turns for them to be able to use a big truck.
They haven't indicated any concern. Most of them are specifically designed for large trucks, semis included. So I don't think you'll hear any objection from them being able to access any of the three southern access points off of-
Okay, and then the other question is, if there was a person in, like a residential owner, or somebody from like the nursing home, or motels, or that kind of thing, or simply like personnel from one of the companies, not necessarily associated directly with that site, whether Walmart would allow ins and outs through their property, or would they, in your estimation, raise a fuss and have a right to raise a fuss for a number of additional traffic on those entrance and exits, because they are commercial?
Yeah. If I can speak to respond.
George, yeah, please do.
The north-south Kettle Park Way, this is a public access point into the facility. This is anticipated to be utilized for public use, and certainly in an emergency use, all of those become fair game for emergency response. I don't think that there's any debate about whether they could or couldn't utilize those. But Kettle Park Way is really anticipated to be for, while it's maintained privately, it's anticipated and provides direct access into the other adjacent lots here, so can be utilized for public circulation.
Follow-up question. Who owns that street?
There's a public portion of it that's here at the access point. Much of it is actually owned in this area by the Walmart, and there's cross-access agreements associated with that area. I believe the area to the north is not part of the Walmart section, a small section here, but there are access agreements across all of that area.
Thank you Rodney.
You're welcome.
And then the second question was-
Can I, I'll get to that. This exhibit was also found in the pre-annexation agreement. Again, it's really just an exhibit to try to show folks what type of, at this conceptual level, access was anticipated or thought of for entering into the development. It might be kind of tough to see, but there's actually an access point here, there's one here, and there's one into the rear of the commercial center, and an additional one into this area that was required to be preserved for the Walmart facility. So this access point was never, never materialized. And it does show the connection of Oak Opening Drive to State Highway 138. To kind of further elaborate, at least, and we're not really here to talk about numbers specifically, but I think this exhibit also found in the pre-annexation agreement talks about the types of improvements that were planned, or the cost of improvements to any of those intersection. Intersection A, B, C, D, and E are the intersections that are connections with State Highway 138. Why this is at least talked about here, columns one and two are the cost estimates for Phase 1 construction activities, as identified in the pre-annexation agreement. Phase 2 and 3, or future phases, were the latter columns here. The next exhibit will show what type of costs were attributed to what type of intersections at these locations.
And just to add that, these documents are in our binders that we received, and I believe they're also on the website.
Yeah. They're part of the pre-annexation agreement as well. So those intersections that were identified in the columns on the previous page relate to an access point into the commercial center at A, B. This is an unnamed one, but it's the driveway to the rear of the commercial center parcel. Access D was the one that was envisioned into a separate commercial property that now has remained as dedicated open space on the rear of the Walmart facility. And access point E is the location where Oak Opening Drive would connect with State Highway 138. You can see, at least at this level, there was anticipated a roundabout at Highway 51. There was a roundabout into the commercial center area, and at this point, there was not a roundabout or a signalized intersection anticipated at this point as part of this pre-annexation agreement. This again really represents the phasing diagram that was associated with the preliminary plat that's been submitted for Phase 2. Phase 2A, if you will, was the area for the hotel and senior housing that's been approved and was allowed to move forward. Phase B represents the area that would be likely the first phase of development or construction or improvement. Phase B and C were likely the first two areas that would be constructed as part of the Phase 2 construction series. Recall, one of the conditions that we're really here talking about was the preliminary plat needed to include a connection of Oak Opening Drive to State Highway 138. That's still on the table. The phased approach that's being presented by the development team at this point is one in which, this is the Oak Opening Drive connection to State Highway 138, as shown here, it would allow for a right-in and right-out movement, and as subsequent development to the south would warrant, and the DOT would allow, would anticipate a build-out into a roundabout in the future. I think the last one I have really is the resolution, and you've all read the resolution. The discussion tonight, or the focus of this resolution, is trying to learn if the right-in, right-out intersection, at this point, would satisfy the condition that was placed on the preliminary plat, if they are able to obtain approval from the DOT. As discussed previously, the DOT has indicated, at least at a staff level, that there might be some support to have a phased intersection approval at State Highway 138 and Oak Opening with a right-in, right-out. Until such time, a full development to the roundabout is needed.
Okay, thank you. Alder Person Boersma?
Yeah, and if other people have, may have the same question, I'm just going with the fact that this question may be asked as well. So with a right-in, right-out, it would be anticipated that a number of people would be coming in from Oregon, wanting to get into the development. Would then, your understanding be that they would go to that first roundabout to turn back, to go the other way to get into the facility? Is that correct?
Well, yeah, here, I think the graphic will help, just to understand how that movement could occur, if they're coming from the west to the east. It's hard to say exactly who's destined for what location, but there's probably a larger traffic draw to the commercial center from the west. That being said, they certainly can utilize this roundabout to access the commercial center, or if they have a need to be farther, to points farther north, they would continue through this and take 51 to the north. Now, people that are in this development, in this residential and/or even a commercial center, folks that are destined for Madison from here, certainly can utilize the right-out opportunity from Oak Opening. Or if they're destined for within the city, for downtown traffic, they could come out and use this signalized intersection and progress through, or they could come into this point and traverse through this roundabout and continue into the city.
Rodney, I was specifically talking about if the approval would be for the Oak Opening right-in, right-out.
Yeah, right, that's what I was referring to. So if this is just a right-in, right-out, these folks would have to come into this area, or this area, if they're trying to come, if, does that answer your question Sid?
Yeah, they'd probably take that first roundabout.
That would certainly be an option for them, right there.
Go backwards.
Do a 180, he's saying.
If you live in that neighborhood, he's saying, you have to either go to that first roundabout, do a 180, go back to Oak Opening to get back to your house, or cut through the commercial center to get to your house, if you're coming from-
Or you could, or you could come to 51 and take Jackson Street. Or, as patterns kind of evolve, people determine what route they prefer. They may actually come in a different direction. They may come from Madison at 51.
They can come in up 138 and then, from any west, and then come ignore it.
Right.
Or right in.
Here, they have to progress to this point.
But heading westbound, they could go in.
Certainly, heading westbound, they could come up into it.
Did you have something else, Alder Person Hirsch?
No, I was just trying, because I know what Sid was trying to say, and that's, it wasn't being answered.
Okay. And then I had Alder Person Lawrence, and then O'Connor.
Thank you, Mr. President. While not on the table, per se, my question is regarding the future. So, right now, we're talking about a right-in, right-out. At what point, Rodney, I'm going to ask you to speculate or report what you've understand from DOT. At what point will DOT require that Oak, is that Oak Opening, is that the name of the street there?
Sure.
At what point will they require that that is a roundabout? What's the term they use, warrant?
Yeah.
What will they require for that?
I think the city would strongly demand, as development to the south occurs, that that would be the very timely, the very appropriate time for improvement of this into a roundabout. As you know, we don't have this area within the city limits. It's not even within the city's urban service area at this time. There hasn't been any conversations with these property owners about interest in developing their property. My forecast on this is unclear, but I think it's greater than 10 years.
Okay, can I follow up?
Sure.
On that. So, based on what I just think I heard, then it sounds to me as if you, and correct me if I'm wrong, as if you're saying that it's not likely, then, that DOT will require a roundabout with commencing with Phase 3, or at some point with Phase 3 of Kettle Park West, if in fact that ever happens?
I don't believe so.
All right.
Because the traffic volume, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
Should I respond?
Sure.
I'm sorry. I'm wanting to make sure I'm not out of order here. If we recall, the traffic impact analysis that was completed, even with the full build-out, just utilizing Jackson Street, while maybe not as convenient, does not exceed the level of Service C. Level of Service F is bad, so C is acceptable under our ordinances. So even at full build-out, just utilizing this route does not exceed the level of Service C for that intersection. That's even if this one is not connected, and this one is not connected. Again, I'm not suggesting neither of those are important. I'm just saying that to drive the warrants to make this be a requirement for some type of intersection improvement, it's likely going to be driven by demand from development to the south as well.
Okay, bear with me. I'm sorry, I'm going to ask the question now in a slightly different way, which is, will the DOT, in your opinion, not allow a roundabout at that intersection prior to those warrants being met?
I don't know that I can answer that.
All right, fair enough.
Okay, so I had Alder Person O'Connor, then Boersma, and then Hirsch.
Paul asked two of the three of the questions I had. The third one, the purpose of the right-in, right-out is to avoid situations like we have at Robie Road currently?
Yep.
Yeah, I think the council discussion was also about emergency access, additional options into the rear portion of the development.
Right, but the purpose of the right-in, right-out versus an open intersection is to avoid the-
Accidents.
Yeah.
Correct. We're pretty convinced the DOT wouldn't allow just an uncontrolled intersection there with full movement.
Anything else? Okay, I had Alder Person Boersma, then Hirsch, and then-
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, I'm a realtor. I'm not a developer, but I am a realtor. And I'm looking at that section across on the south side of the highway. And as a developer, I might think that I would be, I'd have a better development, and I would maybe jump at a development on the south side if I had that access right away, and I knew that I was going to be able to count on a roundabout to get in and out from, you know, onto 138 for that whole section from Milwaukee upwards. And it seems to me that, it depends on how you look at a chicken before, you know, before the egg or whatever, but that a developer might jump at the possibility of developing on that side of the street more likely if they're, if they knew that there was a possibility of a roundabout. And I'm just thinking about, in a more macro way for the city, just in terms of development, that to entice development, potentially having that, would just, it's like a no-brainer. It would be much better for a developer to know that they would have that access point.
Certainly, opening this up may make it more intriguing to the development community. There still are some barriers to that type of development, or any type of development occurring there. It's not in the city, it's not in the urban service area, and you may or may not have willing landowners. I mean, money does talk, but if you have a number of property owners that you can't assemble appropriate quantity to make a development equitable or profitable, that might not drive that unilaterally just because there's a roundabout placed here. As this develops at some point in the future, you're certainly going to reflect upon the impacts to State Highway 138 with whatever is being added to that based on this development. There may be things that we don't see along this corridor that we need to address, or would be addressed, including conversion of this to a roundabout. Even the one that's here, creating the fourth leg into utility property, if you will, making that, that may help facilitate some of this movement. So there's a number of things in sequencing and using our crystal ball to forecast when this will develop, it certainly seems long-range at this point. Absent the area, the utility land is probably the most ripe for development, because it does have the potential for the fourth leg to the existing roundabout that's there now. But the area to the south and west of that is probably longer range.
I have Alder Person Hirsch, and then Engelberger.
Thank you. I was just, you know, I'm bringing up to you Rodney, or the chief, is there any other option we have for that intersection? Could it be like a boulevard with a, to have like a third lane, a turn lane, left turn lane in, or, I just think that people that are going to live up in that section of Phase 2 and 3 are going to, it's going to just be a zoo come the two different times of the day when traffic is, to go around that roundabout and head back to Oak Opening. It's just, it just doesn't seem like a smart way to plan a new kind of subdivision, is that you have to inconvenience the new owners to like figure out a better way to get in efficiently into a house. Yes, I know you can loop around, but who's going to loop around? Nobody's going to drive a mile out of their way to get to their house if they're the first one in Oak Opening, or up in the Phase 3. There's just no way, if they're coming from Oregon. I mean, that's just not the way people think. So is there any other type of boulevard or intersection that we could create there that would be safe, that isn't a roundabout, because people are going to, you know, I just, I'm thinking of a public safety issue of them always going to that first roundabout and heading back the whole time. Chief?
Well, quite honestly, the roundabout is probably the safest place for them to make a turnaround, for one. And number two, you're not talking a great distance there for them to come down the roundabout and come back. It's not going to slow traffic. The rest of it is really going to hinge on DOT. I mean, they're going to look at this as a potential for a serious intersection because of the speeds, the locations, and everything else. So if you allow that left turn off of 138 to go northbound, they're going to look at that as being a traffic hazard, and they're going to try to avoid that. That's why, ideally, you'd want a roundabout there. And at some point, it'll warrant it, but I think what I'm hearing from Rodney and what the DOT is thinking is, it just doesn't warrant a roundabout at this time. So this is kind of that temporary fix. But, you know, roundabouts are still a relatively new concept in Wisconsin, and we haven't had a ton of them all over the place. But I think as people get more comfortable with them, they find that they're a much more convenient way to move traffic than any other type of a control. So I look at it as, I don't see that if- So I, I look at it as, I don't see that if, if I lived in that neighborhood, I don't really see that as a big inconvenience to go a few blocks down further, you know, go through the roundabout and come right back out. I'm usually not going to stop because depending on the time of the day, and if you look at commuter traffic, you know, most of our traffic on 138 goes out westbound in the morning, comes back eastbound at night. And so the westbound slowdown at that roundabout will be minimal. A lot of the traffic going into Walmart from the city and that general business district right there in the corner, a lot of that's going to take Jackson Street. It's just going to be much more convenient for them other than the coming up through the roundabout. It's, you're quicker to go through the, the intersection 138 and 51 to go up to one more intersection and, and turn at the signal at Jackson Street. So, I mean, I, that's, those are kind of the things that I would see as a traffic pattern. People will find the most convenient route, whatever is there and available to them. And if, if it's not available, they'll, they'll take whatever method they need to get where they're going. So I, I don't see it as a real big inconvenience. It is a little, but not as a real big. I think the real convenience aspect of it is that right, right turn out, if you've got commuter traffic going out in the morning, more people are in a rush to get to work than they are to get back home. And it's a little slower traffic pattern on the reverse end.
Okay. Just a follow-up, I was just going to ask the Realtors in the room if they thought it would be a hindrance to actually getting people to buy properties way up in the upper Phase Two and Phase Three if they're going to head out to Oregon on Oak Opening, if they're going to think it's a pain to only have a ride-in, ride-out and then have to use that roundabout to get back home. So Sid, Paul, if you guys have any comments?
I would say absolutely that, that they would find it much more convenient with a roundabout. And, and as a driver myself, you know, I've gone through roundabouts and, and when I turn around and have to go back and I know that I've got to go get back in, that it just, it's kind of irritating for people. I can imagine a number of our citizens would say, why am I doing this? Why isn't there a roundabout so I can get directly back to my home? And, and that I think includes any, I think, I think access, you know, from a Realtor's point of view is, access is way high. And that may be not location, 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 but access, access, access is pretty important. That's, that's my understanding of why people buy homes and why they choose to build homes in a certain area is because it's easy to get to work, it's a good community, it's got great schools, and it's got walkability, and, and it's, and it's convenient and close enough to shopping that they feel like they don't have to go across state to get to their grocery store, so.
Thank you.
Tim?
Hello, bud.
Couple of points. I think, and I was just brought the, the highlighted traffic, traffic impact analysis did look at the traffic volumes that would be coming from the west going east that would be, based on the makeup of the facilities in this development. At peak buildout in 2025, they would anticipate, the traffic study anticipates there'd be 31 drivers anticipating to come into this area from, from this direction. Thirty-one. In the morning, that number, as you can appreciate, would be less, and the traffic impact analysis indicates nine drivers would be destined for some location within this development coming from the east. I, I'm not a Realtor, and I'm not trying to be one, I'm just pointing out that people do have choices on where they locate. We have a number of locations within the city that I think people have found not having a direct route on a main arterial has been important to them. And to think of areas that are a fair distance off of 51 or Main Street, even Nordic Ridge comes to mind. Yes, you've got Hole Avenue, but as you work into the, into the area behind Fox Prairie School, there's a number of areas within those locations that are not as convenient to get to and from if your destination is Madison on a daily basis. Some people find that appropriate, others don't. And so people would have to make that decision as they'd locate here.
I just had a couple of quick questions, and then I think Mike was on deck.
What was the question about Realtors?
Did you want to follow?
No, I think Rodney actually, my only comment on, on the question is that, who knows? I mean, the market will ultimately, what people decide about the convenience factor or the inconvenience factors is indeterminate at this point and undetermined by me, that's for certain. And furthermore, it almost argues that, well, certainly a roundabout would be preferable, there's no question of that. The, the argument is almost that the, the houses, the, the development of the single-family houses have to be so close to an arterial that it defies actual experience. We have plenty of neighborhoods in town and, and outside of town that are not directly connected, and yet people buy in those neighborhoods all the time. So I'm not sure exactly where the conversation is going, much beyond that.
Okay. Attorney Dragon?
I just, one issue that I haven't heard addressed, at least tonight, and I don't recall whether it was addressed specifically during the earlier discussion, is do we know the difference in cost between the ride-in, ride-out and a roundabout? Or do we have a sense of what that is? I don't know if that developer has that.
I don't have it at my fingertips.
Ron Hinshew with Ford Development Group. We did a rough, you know, take at it. The challenge there is the acquisition of land. So the roundabout, if, when Rodney had it up earlier, it consumed so much land, the challenge was estimating the value of the land. And, and that we don't have, but based on the estimates that we did, we anticipated with the acquisition of land, the building of the roundabout, it would be somewhere between $5 and $10 million is all we can say, because there's no way right now to specifically say, what are you going to pay? What is someone going to charge you for that land when they're losing basically their entire property? So that's the best that we could do at that point in time without knowing exactly how you would acquire that land. Now, that would be, if we went out as a developer and worked to try to secure that land, the city may have other options available to them, or the state surely would if they were involved in saying that this is something that's required. But, but short of that, that was where we landed in regards to what we thought we'd have to do to try to secure that land. So somewhere in excess of $5 million is our estimate.
Okay. Thank you. So I had, the question I had when we were talking earlier with the chief was, any idea what the speed limit's going to be on that stretch, or how is that determined?
DOT would actually determine what the speed's going to be out there. I mean, we would have some influence because we would have some jurisdiction with it, but they are going to be the final decision-maker on speeds on any of our state highways. And the county then also gets involved in any county trunks. So the, the state ultimately would have control over what the speed, speed limit would be.
All right. Then I had Alder Person, Engelberger, and then Kittleson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Three things I just wanted to bring up for discussion. We, earlier, I think it was even prior to the first phase of adoption, we had a big discussion about public safety and needing access points into KPW. And if I recall, at that time, we had discussion from the chief and both chiefs, fire and police chief, and EMS, I believe, regarding what's required for access and what they could live with, with access. And then we made a determination, and I believe the determination that the council made at the time was that we wanted access in at Jackson, Oak Opening, and at Deer Point and Oak Opening in Robie. So I guess I just wanted a little clarification on that or discussion on that. The second point I wanted to make was, if you're going to have an intersection at Oak Opening and 138, and you're going to have at first a ride-in, ride-out, and then 10 years down the road or possibly more or less than that, depending on when development occurs, then all of a sudden you want to change to a roundabout, now you're, you're paying basically twice for an intersection. And my other point on that would be, my thoughts are, and my, my opinion is, that this is a state highway, and, and the cost should be paid for by the state of Wisconsin taxpayers, not the city of Stoughton taxpayers through TIF, and/or it should be paid by the developer. That's pretty common development criteria throughout the state of Wisconsin. My third point would be, we're having a meeting, I believe, this Thursday, Rodney, with the DOT, and to discuss, I think, the intersection of 151 and 138, and also Hole Avenue and 51, is that right?
Yeah, their plan is to, and we've known this for some time, to install a roundabout at 138 and 51. And as you recall, the city's resolution supported Alternative H with, with that being a roundabout. And then we also strongly encourage signalization or a roundabout at Hole Avenue. And their plan is to install a, a roundabout at that location.
So I guess my third point would be discussion about that roundabout at, at Hole Avenue and, and 51. Is it that much more necessary through, through traffic studies? Or could you possibly forego that one and do something a little different with that one and actually put the roundabout in at 138? That would be my three points of discussion for, for this conversation.
I had Alder Person, Kittleson was next.
Thank you. Question I have, and you guys will have to help me out here if you can, is I thought we were doing a meeting on the 27th to see what we were talking about money-wise. So if we're making a decision on this now, what is, what impact does that have on that meeting for the 27th?
Well, I think this conversation started before the TIF request, if I recall. There was, as a condition of the Phase Two plat, and the idea was to move this up to tonight to help the developers get some direction so they can schedule a meeting with the DOT about this access issue. Now, I don't know if the group they're going to meet with the DOT has anything to do with the other DOT projects that we're going to be meeting about or not. I have no idea if they're the same people or how that's going to work. The meeting on, later on in the month is more to discuss the costs. Now, if we decide that we want to do something other than the ride-in, ride-out, which is what I'm assuming was in the TIF request, we want to do something other than that, say we want, now we want a roundabout, let's say that's what we decide, that's going to change the TIF request, I would, I would guess. Or if we say, you know what, we don't need anything there, we can get by without the access issue, that would reduce the TIF request. So I think the idea tonight was to get some clarification as a council and give the developers some direction on how they should proceed with their discussions with the DOT.
What style, then, is what you're saying?
That's, that's my understanding, and is that yours as well?
Yes.
Absolutely.
That's what it is, for what style.
What, what would the, my understanding is, the question before us tonight is, or before you tonight is, what will the council accept as, as the resolution our 129 of 16 requires as that intersection? Because it was, it would behoove the developer to go to DOT and say, we think a ride-in, ride-out's going to work. You know, Access Board, do you approve that? And the Access Board goes, and I don't know what they're going to say, but if they would say, yes, we approve that, and then they'd come back to council, and council said, well, we really want it a roundabout, so.
Well, we understand.
Yeah.
Now, the other question I have is the property that we're talking about with the Doris, is that still under their control? For that area there? Who's control? The developers' control?
So I think the question is, is in order to accommodate the ride-in, ride-out, our understanding is, is you have to reroute the driveway on the Doris property, is that accurate? And if it is, then I think Alder Person, Kittleson's question is, is do you still control that property or still have rights to that property?
Hi, Dan O'Callaghan, on behalf of Ford Development Group. Yes, that has been the conversation with DOT staff so far, is that they would be looking for us to trade access. And no, that property's no longer under contract. Our contract expired at the end of the year.
Anything else? Okay, so I have Alder Person, Trul.
Thank you. I wanted to wait and definitely let a lot of folks ask, ask questions to try and get clarification. The reason I had moved a number of meetings ago to, to table this was frankly to Dennis' question. At the time it came before us, I thought we were going to be taking up the, the financial side a week later, and I thought they're, they're integrally tied. And so that was why I, I had moved, moved that we table it. A number of the council folks talked to me that evening and said, why did you do this? We should have given them, you know, direction. And I still feel it's, it's, it's integrally tied to the whole TIF discussion. But I have, I have also been, I now understand a bit more about, about the guidance that they are looking for. I think it's fair to say that all of us would prefer to have a, a roundabout out there. It would be, it would serve the city better long-term. It would open up the property to the south. It would, would deal with whether we're talking about, you know, nine cars, 30 cars, 100 cars that want to try and get in there. But from a very practical standpoint, DOT isn't going to give it to us. At least not now. It's not warranted. When we were going through the discussion about the park and the layout and, and the phasing of the project, you may recall that, that at that time, the developer came in and had, and Ron, if you could go back to one of the master plans, they had shown a number of, of, in the Phase D, had shown a number of residential lots or duplex lots on the left side, on the west side of, of Oak Opening. And then down on the, the southeast side, they had townhomes or some other smaller units and things. And at the time, back to the public safety discussion, when they came in with the initial request, is it 600 feet or 800 feet that we allow at dead end?
Six hundred.
Six hundred feet. They had extended that road 600 feet, and a number of us were concerned about it because we really were creating a situation where if something were to happen, at that point, we don't, we didn't have a, and to some extent, we still don't have a final agreement on getting in on Deer Point. And so the only access that we know is it was going to, coming off of the 151 or 51 corridor was Jackson Street. We now have, have the, the roundabouts that come off 138. But I know we had talked about it at public safety, about the concern of what if, if, you know, a vehicle, what if Jackson Street were closed off? How would people get in, or how would we get vehicles and things? And I, and I think a number of us were concerned about that, that dead end, that, that was, that was allowable, but I, we didn't think it was in, in good practice. And, and so a number of folks, I think, felt real strongly about the need to, to go back to the original plan and show that access, bring Oak Opening back out to 138. I guess where I, I find myself at, at this point is, you know, back to the discussion about would we like to have something different? I think the answer is yes. I also, while I'm not a Realtor, I spent half my life working on, on developments. And I, and I, you know, frankly, this development could have happened and could happen in other communities with just the Jackson access. We're in a unique situation here because we can actually improve the development by providing the 138 connection, providing any connection to 138. It's not It's not uncommon to have a main thoroughfare that brings in and then takes you into that park with the residential kind of things. I also, you know, we don't know, we've shown, he's shown plans that show Phase Three, you know, we don't know what's going to happen beyond, nor should we. I mean, we, to some extent, we should understand what the developers' end game is, but, you know, we need to be able to take each of these phases independently. But when we look at the possible Phase Three, it shows east-west roads, you know, going in there. Frankly, we're just another 40, I think, away from getting back out to Star School, you know, I mean, the possibility exists at some time in the extended future that, to me, there could be another access point, you know, a quarter mile down the road that actually would bring us in into the backside, the residential side of the development here. So I guess I just want to kind of bring some of those things back. I mean, fundamentally, when we were looking at the plan, there were a number of us that were concerned, this is the better map to look at. We see all the townhomes that are down there along the kettle, some type of a smaller condo type units, I assumed, and then there were development houses on the northwest side of the road. I couldn't have supported that because I really think we were creating a true dead end situation there. And we did have the opportunity, do have the opportunity to extend this. So again, just kind of a refresh on where we were, what's up. We've had the discussions about the safety vehicles. I know that we had asked both the chiefs about the service into there and I think it's fair to say that they both indicated, you know, we would never turn down better access, but that we could use the access that was proposed before. I think the right in, right out does improve our emergency services because clearly the ability of, if there were something by the kettle, our emergency vehicles would most likely be coming from the west along Main Street, we'd get in there. So I think this is an improvement. I do struggle a bit with the costs and some of the cost estimates that the developer has thrown out. As we said, I think part of the issue is not only land acquisition, but remember, there's a significant grade change that's happening out there. And I will personally will still want to see more information from the development, the developers, kind of justifying some of the costs. As I had shared with council when we looked at the packet, even the right in, right out, the cost that's shown of $1,009, again, I believe that more than half of that is the land acquisition for the one parcel of land that we're talking about that provides the driveway that we can trade, and that's air quotes there, to the DOT. I believe that land still will have value. So I don't think the cost of that improvement is really $2 million, it's, it might be $1 million or something on that order. And so, you know, when we do talk about the TIF discussions, I think we're going to want to want to look at those things a little closer. But I guess at the end of the day, I would encourage you, and when questions are done, I am going to move, that we move forward and approve this because I think it will give the developers some opportunity to at least go have meaningful discussions with DOT. But I hope that we do look at this and say, I think it is an improvement. I think we were absolutely justified in saying that we weren't going to allow anything to happen unless we provided some access back out to 138. I think this is the, while it may not be perfect, I think it's the most likely, gives us the most likely chance of actually having something that the DOT will approve and can move us forward. So I'll turn it back over to any of the questions, but when there are no questions, I would like to move forward on this.
Okay. I had a couple of comments to follow up on that. I know I went to the initial meeting that we had with the DOT regarding the access issue. And at that meeting, basically, we started with, no, you're not going to get another access. So the fact that we're even here discussing access possibilities tonight, I think, is a positive. Whether or not ultimately the DOT will approve whatever direction we give the developers, we don't know, we can only try and see what happens. One thing that they did mention at that meeting is exactly what Alder Person Trul just touched upon, was they felt that in the future, if this continues to go toward the west, that it may be more appropriate to put some sort of a signal or roundabout at Star School Road because they currently have more incidents there than they do on closer to this way. So that's a possibility. So for us to invest money in a roundabout now might not necessarily be a good investment of money anyway, or for somebody to invest it, whether it's us, the DOT, or the developers. So a lot of that will just depend on, you know, what happens in the next several years. And as Rodney mentioned, you know, we can all pull out our crystal ball or our magic eight ball, but we just don't know what's going to happen. So I just wanted to share that information. Alder Person Borzma.
And just one comment from Alder Person Lawrence. Now, that is, I think that for a residential, I'm talking about convenience now, but to get in and out, I think residential people would rather get in and out through a residential in-out rather than a commercial in-out. You know, I think that they prefer to have it a bit separated from a commercial development if they, and that's the reason why I think that's so important. It's not that, not that they can't put up with some hassle of getting in and out of their residential where they live, but I think just the fact that you have that easy access not associated with a commercial that's right next door would benefit a development area. And then the second question that I had was actually to President Swadley. And that is that you had talked about the last time, I think, whether or not we would have a way to save money by, on that 138-51 access where they have the light, that we keep a light or even a temporary light or something to not blow all our money on something like that and actually add that to a, I mean, to make it just more feasible for us to be able to afford a project like this. I was interested in whether or not you could address that, Tim.
Well, certainly, you know, it's something that many of us have talked about, and I heard it earlier tonight, with the proposed roundabout at 138 and 51 and also Silverado and Hole. I think we're going to have an opportunity Thursday night to talk to the DOT about what their plans are and how they feel that may or may not benefit us by putting in them roundabouts. I know there's some community members that have expressed some concerns that about, a roundabout versus signals from a pedestrian and bicycle safety point of view, and I don't know if the chief has any thoughts on that as well. But those are the types of conversations that I hope we can engage in when the DOT officials are here. And more importantly, when they come back in a couple of weeks, that community members will attend that meeting and give their perspective on what they would like to see. Because one of the things, you know, I would like to see is as our community grows and we complete our comprehensive plan, that it's written and the vision that's in there is our vision and not necessarily the vision of a developers or a vision of the DOT, but it's a vision of the residents of Stoughton and how we can balance the needs of others while we put that plan together.
Yeah, just to follow up to that because my thought is that, and I've talked to a number of citizens about this too, and that is that roundabouts get to be too much. And I think a combination of lights and roundabouts is not necessarily a bad idea because I think people in some communities kind of get sick of roundabouts, where there's continuous roundabouts all the time, that some people would prefer lights and roundabouts rather than all lights and all roundabouts.
Well, and a follow up on that, I think that's a legitimate point. One of the things that I did hear at the DOT meeting is the concern about having too many roundabouts too close together. They had suggested that they'd like to see them spaced at least a half a mile apart. Well, what is being proposed, and we're going to have an opportunity to talk to the officials about, is basically to have three of them potentially within, within, I don't know what that distance is, is that a half mile between the Walmart entrance and Hole and Silverado?
No.
Less.
Yeah, it's less. So those are the types of discussions I think that we could have, and certainly adding a fourth one going into Oak Opening really kind of complicates matters. So, I mean, I think we'll have an opportunity to talk about that, but I know that the DOT is concerned about having too many roundabouts in a combined area.
I was just going to, I was just going to comment as well, at that same meeting, we met a young lady whose job is just that. At the DOT, she looks at stretches of highways and her job is to look at, what do they call them, intersections, whether they're roundabouts or stoplights and how they all interact together. And so, believe it or not, that is somebody's job to see how all of those intersections work together. I would have no idea how that happens, but that's what they do and that's how they bring down their recommendations of a roundabout at 138, 51 and Hole and 51. Someone with a lot more knowledge than I figures all that out.
I had Alder Person Engelberger and then Bartlet.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Question for Rodney. Now I forgot what it was. Well, another question is, does a right in, right out at Oak Opening, how does that affect the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, the five driveways that appear to be residential or farm driveways? How does, within 400 feet of that intersection, how does that affect those driveways?
Well, those are the design details that have to be worked out, but I think they'd still be subject to the right in, right out aspects of access.
They could stay where they are?
The ones on the south side, I think, would stay where they are, but would have to access it right in, right out from their.
And how about the north side? There's two of them there that are within 400 feet.
But I, I'm sorry, let me draw this, or pull this up. So on the north side, the one that is part of the home that's been discussed, this one would go away. And these would be beyond the taper length, so the ones on the west portion of that.
Those would remain and then the Devaric one would go on to Oak Opening?
That's my understanding, that this would get closed and redirected on Oak Opening in some fashion.
Okay. And then my other question is, can you put the other thing back up?
All I did was blow this up, I'm sorry. If you want. Is this what you wanted?
No, the previous screen that you had up.
This one?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the work at 151 and, I'm sorry, 51 and 138 and the work at Hole, what, that's the DOT work that we're talking about, what is the local taxpayer cost for that, other than, I think we just authorized $52,000 for preparation costs or something?
None of that's related to these intersections.
Okay. So what is the local cost for these two intersections?
The cost share has not been determined at all and there may be none. This is DOT controlled right away from this point out.
Okay.
So there may be, if there is ancillary improvements or aesthetic issues that we'd like to require, those would likely be on our nickel.
So I mean, you know, common sense says that work is going to be done on these intersections to improve the safety, which will help the city. So basically, we should just let that happen. And, I mean, it's on the board for being done in the very near future. The other things we're talking about are however far out, we don't even know how far out they are. So I think we need to let those happen and we need to continue the discussion on, you know, my first question from before was about the safety aspect. This council made a recommendation or a statement, basically, that we wanted, we wanted Oak Opening and Deer Point to be included before authorizing more work in the second phase, I believe, isn't that correct or no?
Right.
So are we still at that point or aren't we? That's my question. I'd like some discussion on that, I haven't heard any.
Okay. So I have Alder Person Bartlett, Kittelsohn, Trul and Borzma.
What would that change?
Thank you. And Alder Person Engelberger brought up my concern. I was looking at those residences to the south and it looks like in that right in, right out zone, there's another four or five houses to the south. And I don't see a real safe way for them, we're going to hinder access to their residents getting in there. And if they're coming from the city, they're going to have to go past and find a place to turn around or turn one of these side roads as 138 gets busier with all this traffic. So just concerned about the impact, possibly devaluing their land. If I lived there, I'd be quite upset. So do you know how far that zone goes from Oak Opening on east and west, Rodney?
Yeah, I think this graphic probably shows it the best. I think there's two driveways that appear to be impacted. And, you know, that's where the discussion would, the detailed discussion with DOT would go. This one and this one would be in the area where there wouldn't be any allowable left turns. This one here looks like it's in the area where you could still turn left. So it appears that this was the relocated driveway onto Oak Opening. I think it's these two that present the issue for areas of properties in the town.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Okay. So I have Alder Person Kittelsohn and then Trul. The question I have, since we're discussing Oak Opening and you're going to change where the Devaric entrance is, who forces that close?
That'd be part of the permit condition.
But, and how does that apply when, who has control of that property then? So they could decide if they would or wouldn't want it done?
In the past, the developer was able to obtain control of that property. They would probably have to pursue that again in order to get that.
So then we come back to the other question that I had brought up before. I mean, discussions are great, but we're going to impact the people on the south side and we don't even know what the real dollar amount is. I understand that's coming back on the 27th. I mean, don't you think we need to kind of discuss that first? Because I think everybody in here knows it's going to be a very hot topic. So for us to give them direction to go get something, I think we should have the direction first that we know that we want to do the money or not.
Well, my understanding, and developers can correct me if I'm wrong, is that in the TIF request, the dollars that were in there was going to cover the cost of not only doing the road, but acquiring any property or rights or whatever in order to complete that work. Is that accurate? Or would there be some additional costs if you get DOT approval on this?
No, the estimates that are in the TIF application are all inclusive.
Dan. Sorry. So the cost estimates that are in the TIF application we submitted in August are all inclusive. So if you look at Exhibit 8 to the TIF application, it lists the estimated cost of that connection at $1.7 million. That includes land acquisition. We actually had that property under contract from roughly July through the end of the year. We tried to get some direction on, you know, the suitability of that intersection that we're proposing so that we would be able to fulfill our commitments under that purchase agreement. The council wanted some more time to study that, so our contract has lapsed. We'd have to go get that back under contract in order to make this solution work.
Okay. But then you guys were talking onsite and offsite, I believe, right? Five some, five point something and five point something?
Right. So the.
So we total that up and we're looking at close to 11. And we know, we know for a fact that we're going to run in the heat on that. So I think it's more important that we've really, I mean, as Alder Person that was here before, I mean, that's the elephant in the room on this.
Well, I certainly think that's part of a discussion. At this point, we have to finalize a plan so we can find $2 million about.
But we have that coming back from Springstead for the 27th.
Right. But if we decide that we don't want to do, basically. But if we decide that we don't want to do basically what's proposed, which is the right-in, right-out on 138, if we want to do something different than that, then Springstead's going to have to have time, and the developer's going to have to have time to amend the TIF request amount. That would be my understanding. Because the amount that was requested was based on this resolution, and if we're going to change this resolution, they're going to have to change the TIF request, therefore, Springstead would have to change what they're analyzing based on the new request. Is that accurate?
That's right. And I'm sorry, it was Exhibit 7, not Exhibit 8 to the TIF application. So, it's this middle portion here that talks about the $5.4 million in onsite costs, those are costs that will be required to facilitate this development, regardless of any of the other issues that we've been talking about, including the 138 connection tonight. That's in the category of offsite improvements, totaling $5.7 million. And Oak opening, that connection is $1.7 million. Robie and Deer Point, I'm sorry, Oak opening is $1.9 million, Robie Deer Point is $1.7 million. The improvements to the town road, $562,000. So, it's those costs that are an additional $5.7 million. Those are, those are subject to discussion, these are elements of the project that the council required as conditions of plat approval. Notwithstanding the, the traffic analysis that was done, the council made a judgment that those should be included, and those are the costs associated with those items. If the council, after further consideration, says, you know, given kind of the long-term planning horizon for development and connection at Oak opening, maybe the council decides not to invest $1.9 million of TIF increment from Kettle Park West to make that interim connection. Maybe the council decides that it's going to wait 10 years, and plan for a more complete intersection, when there's more development to warrant that. That is certainly something the council could do. The council could put all of these items into a project plan, and approve them now, and decide as the, as the project progresses, if and when each of those different pieces of the project will be implemented. All certainly things the council could decide. What we've done is we've put together a plan that shows $90 million of tax base that over the life of the TID generates $34 million of tax increment that can be used to pay for any of these projects. So, that's, that's our commitment, is to generate that increment, and then what, what the city does with that is up to the council. We're proposing $5.4 million of onsite costs, plus $5.7 million of offsite costs that address the plat conditions, but ultimately, it's up to the council. And if you decide that you'd rather delay some of those investments, or maybe use those dollars for other purposes, that's something the council could do.
I had Alderperson Truel, then Boersma, and then Hersh.
Thank you. I would move approval of Resolution 129-2016.
Since we're at the committee, it would be a recommendation to council.
Okay. A recommendation that we, for approval of Resolution 129-2016.
Second.
And if I can speak to it.
And I didn't catch the second.
O'Connor.
O'Connor, thank you. All right, and then go ahead, Alderperson Truel.
Effectively, to Mike's question, this really is back to reaffirming the conditions that we put on before. This, this, this action in and of itself doesn't move the project forward, they still need to get DOT approval. Our resolution that we, that the, as a part of the plan that we adopted previously, the conditions of it still require, and it's in the resolution, you know, the, the connection, the town of Rutland with the bike ped accommodations, the traffic signals at, at Robie Deer Point, and at US 51 intersections, and the connection of Oak opening to Highway 138. Again, our, our condition there was that, that with regard to 138 is that, that they bring a, a connection to our satisfaction. And so, what they're asking for here, or what they're proposing here, ultimately, we make a decision whether, whether this, whether you accept it or not. And, and at the end of the day, it's an individual decision for each of us. Again, I would speak again, would we like something more? I, I think there's, there'd be a lot, a lot of support for that, you know, to do something else. I just don't see the DOT allowing us a, a, a roundabout. I sure as hell don't see us being able to afford it, I don't think the DOT is going to pay for it. I think when we talk about, to Rodney's discussion about the, the property to the south, and that other development down there, we do have an existing roundabout that we could, we can tap, tap off of the fourth leg to get, go through the utility property to facilitate some of the other development that could happen, you know, Sid was asking about, you know, the south, south 138. So, I think we've got some other options. The concern I have, you know, the, the one concern I still have that, that I want us to, to, to deal with is, I think when we look at that, we've seen different plans that, you know, talking about that whole corridor, the 138 corridor, again, to, to the, the people that are going to be impacted by this, and some of the other development that happens, those other driveways, you know, different options about extending, and forgive me, I don't remember the name of the street, Rodney, the, the Service Street that runs in front of.
McComb relative?
Yep, McComb. You know, the possibility of, of tying McComb, you know, to the, the, the roundabout there, and possibly extending McComb up the way. You know, I think, at, at the end of the day, there may be some value in, 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 as future development happens, that, that some of those things are served off of a, a service road rather than, than, than 138. So, you know, there's, there's going to be ongoing discussions, I think those are the kinds of things that we need to definitely talk about in, in, with the comp plan, knowing what we know now, and making those kind of accommodations in the future, we need to continue to plan for what's going to happen in that, that southwest quadrant there. But at the end of the day, guys, and I will understand it if people look at this and say, you know, I, this, this doesn't get what I'm looking for, I still think the development, there's, there's some folks, I, I'm confident, that still are against the development, and if you want to use the right-in, right-out as your reason to not support the development, I understand that. But I think at the end of the day, if you are, if we're truly trying to continue to move forward and improve, and, and create an, an opportunity for Phase 2 to happen, I think this is the most practical solution. I think it, it, it gets us some of the, it gets us at least a half a loaf, in terms of the, the public safety side, and, and again, I, I'm confident the development could have worked if Jackson would have been the only, only access from a, from a residential standpoint, in terms of getting people in and around. I think this is an improvement on it, though, and I think, you know, it continues to move us forward. Having said that, again, I think to Dennis's point, I'm right there. I want to make sure the developers understand that, that what we are, if we, if we pass, if we move forward with this resolution, we are only saying that this is an option, and it, and it meets the, the conditions that we're looking for, but I, I, the, the discussion about payment, and, and to Mr. Callahan's comment about, about, you know, it'd be our choice, we could defer this for 10 years, that ain't happening. We're, we're, in terms of us not putting that, that, that connection in, you know, if, if this project is going to be approved, it's going to happen, we're going to want to see, for me, we're going to want to see that roadway put in, and, and, and developed. So, I, I encourage you to support the resolution.
Okay. I had Alderperson Boersma, and then Hersh.
Yeah, probably, probably, it seems like 3 or 4 months ago, maybe 5 months ago, yeah, we first were introduced to this Phase 2 development, and I remember saying something like, I'm not, I'm not going to be voting for, and positive for this kind of plan unless we get some kind of access to Highway 138 on Oak opening, because that's the only thing that makes sense. And, and that was my position, and it, and it remains my position, and I, I've been struggling this, with this for weeks now, at this point, as to what, what I was going to come up with. I, I do think that we have proposal by, forward to, to a fairly reasonable thing with the right-in, right-out. I'm not, I would much prefer to have a better access through a roundabout or some, something, so I'm not totally pleased with it, for sure, but I think we, as a council, should give forward at least a fighting chance when they go to the DOT to present it. I would have preferred to have the DOT tell us whether they'd approve this thing, you know, and then we can, then we could have a even more favorable discussion about it, but, again, I, with a lot of struggle, I, I think I'm going to support this, just based on the fact that, that was my original thought, that we had to have some kind of access for me to support Phase 2, and I think we have it on the table, and I, I really do agree with Scott, that in order to move forward, at least to crawl forward, we need to give the, for development, somewhat of our blessing on this, so I'm going to vote in positive.
I had Alderperson Hersh.
Thank you. First, I, I like that we're having this discussion, and that, that Oak opening is actually going to happen down to 138, I think that, I think we all kind of discussed this earlier this fall, that that's really key and important. As Scott and others have said, I'm not really happy that it's a right-in and right-out, but I also see that the land acquisition difference between a right-in and right-out and a roundabout at this point might be just too cost prohibitive and too disruptive to current landowners, especially on the south side. My question is, has anybody contacted those landowners on the south side? I mean, here we're going through with, you know, right-in and right-out, and we've, has anybody even reached out to them that their lives are going to be affected at all? I mean, has anybody, Rodney, anybody, developers, even talked to them?
No, we have not. We're looking for direction from the council before we advance the planning further. We've talked with DOT, and we do have an indication from DOT at a staff level as to what they're willing to support, and they're not willing to support a roundabout solution at that intersection right now. They have indicated a willingness to support permission for full access, which we think is great for our development, we think it's great for the long-term prospects for development to the south and to the west, because DOT is going to look at approving, potentially, a more complete intersection, but then permitting construction of only that which they deem is warranted at this point, that being our connection to the north. So, if that proposal, that's what we're bringing to you now, is acceptable, and if that satisfies the plat condition, we'll go back to DOT, we'll continue working with staff and the access committee, and having discussions with the other property owners that would be impacted by that.
So, what happens if, you know, those property owners are not going to like having only a right-in, right-out access, you know, the ones on the south? I mean, that's, you're really restricting them from, I mean, do they get compensated in any way, or for their inconvenience, or is that just eminent domain, and they, that's just what happens?
We, we certainly recognize the same concern, and, just so you understand, it's not, it's not our preference that that be restricted to a right-in, right-out, it's the indication that we're giving, we've been given from DOT staff as to what they would potentially recommend to their access committee for approval. So, we're trying to do the best we can with circumstances that are not entirely within our control, so we're trying to manage that process. It's an incremental and iterative process. So, we've gotten it to this point, now we're back to the council, checking in with you, asking for your permission to proceed, is this acceptable? If it is, we'll continue working on it, because all this does take time, and we understand that you'll be looking at the financial aspects of the proposal in greater depth later this month, and we think that's important, because ultimately, we need to get to a point where a decision can be made in March of this year, if the project is going to have a chance at, at proceeding. Because that, there's still a lot of work to be done after a TIF answer is given. If it's no, we know the answer. If it's yes, then there's a lot of work that has to happen in order to make this project a reality this year. So, we're trying to keep all these balls in the air, and as you can see, it takes time, and when we run out of time, some of the balls drop. So, we're trying to keep all of this together, and certainly, we have to have more conversations, including with those impacted to the south.
Okay, thank you.
I just, I have one question for city attorney. So, in this resolution here, should we require, or do we need anything from the DOT once they've made their decision, as part of this resolution?
So, if we look at the language of the resolution, what it says is that the council resolves that if implemented. If, in other words, the, that configuration is approved by DOT and implemented, that that configuration would satisfy the relevant portion of the resolution. What I would anticipate is if the council, excuse me, approves this resolution, and the DOT approves the plan as well, that the implementation would be addressed through the development agreement.
Okay.
And so, we'd still have to provide for the actual construction of the intersection in development agreement to get all the way there.
Okay.
Would you agree with that, Dan?
Because, and the reason I bring that up is because that is not in the initial construction, I think that was in year 2, maybe, the intersection. So, there was going to be some other work that would be done, potentially done onsite before this intersection would be addressed. So, but you're saying we could cover it through the developers' agreement?
That's my understanding, and we actually, Dan and I had some conversation about exactly how to craft this language, and it's been a little while since we did that, but my recollection is that the concept was, to keep this as simple as possible at this stage, to simply get a, an up or down from the council on whether this design would be acceptable to the council, recognizing that we still have work to do with respect to, they have to get approval from DOT, and we need a development agreement to implement it, to get all the way there.
Because my understanding is, is they can't really begin anything until this is resolved. So, my question then is, is what is the definition of resolved?
Can we go back, Rodney? One up to the connection, okay. So, what the resolution says, you can see at the bottom of paragraph B, the connection, the connection of Oak opening drive to Highway 138 has been resolved to the city's satisfaction. What we're saying in this resolution is that this design, if actually implemented by the developer, would satisfy that condition. The question of implementation is, I think, has to be addressed through the development agreement. This only answers part of the question, which is, is this design acceptable if it's implemented? Recognizing that if they never implement it, if we don't have an agreement with them to actually construct the intersection, we still haven't satisfied that condition fully. So, that, we still have the funding question to get over, we still have the phasing question to get through, when is it going to be built? I think those have to be addressed in the development agreement.
Okay. Is that your understanding as well?
Yeah, well said, there's a set of issues, the design, the cost, the timing, the development agreement, all of those surround this connection, we're asking the first question. We're asking design, and we're very explicit about that in the proposed resolution, does this design configuration satisfy the council if we were to implement it? If you say yes, we'll keep working on it, we'll, we'll get to the cost, we'll get to the timing, we'll get to the responsibility in the development agreement, and all the rest, we're just asking the first question, which is, this is what, the design proposal that we've been able to develop, does this satisfy the city council?
I have Alderperson Boersma.
Yeah, I, I have one more logic point that I, I wanted to make, and I didn't, and I just spoke, and that is that I think my ulterior motive on this, to some extent of, kind of, but of approving the right-in, right-out, is that I think if we get that for this particular Oak opening and 138 access point, that, that gives us quite a lot more possibility of having at some point. having at some point, you know, a reasonable sort of way to get in and out in the future, both going south, east, yeah, south and north, or east and west. At least it gives us, I think, the heads up for in the future, potentially be able to access all the way to that, to a potential development along Milwaukee Street as well. So I, you know, I think that the, I think it's a, although it's not perfect for right now, I think it potentially gives us a lot more possibilities as a city for a future development. And I'm not sure that anybody else made that point, and I just wanted to say that we may be a leg up with having done this, so.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, so this is a recommendation to the council from the committee of the hall, which we're going to do a roll call vote, and I was reminded that the mayor gets to participate in the voting process at the committee of the hall, so we don't want to forget her.
I get so sad when they don't call my name.
So, we're ready to vote?
No, we're not.
Oh, one more thing. Alder Chris Engelberg.
Yeah, Rodney, can you bring up B, C, and D on the map?
I don't know if you mean B, C, and D.
Well, section B in the resolution.
You mean areas B, C, and D?
Yeah.
For the development areas?
Those?
Just trying to see what we're actually voting on here. So what are we actually voting on?
So areas B, C, and D, those are the areas on the plat that are shown as kind of the next development areas, and this, the resolution approved, yeah, so B, C, and D, what the resolution that was approved by the council, when the preliminary plat was approved, says is that the, the city will not approve an agreement that allows the developer to move forward with B, C, and D until those issues identified in that paragraph are addressed. One of those issues being the, the connection to 138 of Oak Opening. And so, what, what you're voting on in this resolution is, can you go back to the resolution, And scroll down.
Last condition, right, and B.
Yeah, well, so what, yeah, what you're, this is what you're actually approving. What you're saying is that if this design that they're proposing is implemented, that would satisfy the council's condition relating to the connection with 138, that that design would be satisfactory to the city council. That's all you're doing in this resolution.
So, I guess my question, when you look at the map there, B, C, and D, that doesn't connect to 138. E takes it further.
They would have to implement that through, and, and I suppose we'd need a final plat showing that connection going all the way to 138. That would be part of the implementation.
And then how does this affect the Deer Point access?
Does it still need it?
That's still required.
So that's required from what was passed in May?
Yep.
Right. The resolution.
All we're doing is we're moving, we're, we're giving, if they implement this, we're taking away one of those conditions that, before they can move forward, they still need, before everything else happens, we still need the Deer Point, we still need the pedestrian, some of the other things we were talking about, correct?
That's right.
Anything that's in that paragraph.
In our last meeting, if I, if I still can, that was basically our third kick at the can at this, this is our fourth, voting on moving this forward, and I believe Alder Mieske at that meeting said we were putting the cart before the horse. What's changed between last meeting last month and this meeting, is my question?
Well, we, I, I think we've received the TIF request for one thing.
Well, we had that last time.
Um, trying to remember if we received that.
We had that, and the thing is, we haven't heard from Springstead yet whether the numbers are aligned. That's where we were putting the cart before the horse. What's different, is my question?
Well, I think Scott answered, go ahead.
I would answer, for, for me, what, what's happening is, when I, when I moved, that we, we put it on hold, I thought we were going to tie it directly to the TIF discussion, I figured it was all going to come together at one point. Having said that, we still have to have a discussion, we still have the discussion about, about what TIF increment we, we can support, if any, but notwithstanding who's going to pay for it, this gets back to the plan. You know, what are we, what are we approving in terms of, of the overall development? And so what this does is at least gives them direction to go and talk to potentially remove one of those conditions overall. So, you know, for, for me personally, that's, that's what it is, Mike. I mean, I think, you know, you still, the, the whole discussion about, about the TIF, Springstead doing, doing, is, is really doing the due diligence on their TIF request. We'll make a decision and, and recommendation as to ultimately what, what if any TIF of any of that we can support. If we, if, if we hypothetically gave, gave nothing, chose to do nothing, if the developer wanted to move forward and pay for everything themselves, they still would need us to move forward with, this was still a condition of, of getting the, the plan and allowing them to move, to stick a shovel in the ground.
Okay, I guess I would ask Alder Mieske, what, what's changed since last meeting?
Nothing.
Okay. I didn't think so.
Okay. And, you know, the only other thing that could change is if they go to the DOT and the DOT says this doesn't work for them, you know, then that won't have satisfied this part of this, and we'll be right back to square one. But, you know, I, I think the idea is, is to get them back in front of the DOT and see if, if that'll work out, and if not, then we'll have to come back with another plan, and then potentially update the TIF request or reflect the changes.
Just one other thing, I, I'm just going to say that I, you know, I think we do absolutely need a connection there, but I, I think a right in, right out is not the connection we need there, so.
Well, I think it's possible that if the DOT, I mean, they're not going to want to put something there that they don't think is going to work and going to be safe. So if we get to that point, they may very well say that, and they may come back with something other than that, but this is the direction that we were given by staff to this point.
One follow-up, I mean, this goes to my point of four lanes past the development both ways, and four lanes into the development. I think we've got an inadequate situation here for traffic, it's going to be a mess, and, you know, I just don't think we've done this right, so I think it's a real big problem down the road.
Alder Person Hirsch first.
Oh, I didn't, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's right, I mean, I guess I'm, I'm in a quandary, because we requested the developers to abide by these conditions, and they, they came in with a proposal to try to abide by these conditions that we asked them. We don't like the right in, right out, but it sounds like the DOT, that's the only thing that they're even thinking about at this point, if anything. So I don't think we can penalize the developer for doing what we've asked them to do at this point. This may all change again on Thursday, I mean, we have a meeting with the DOT, I, I thought that this meeting should happen after a meeting with the DOT, it seems that's why I was kind of, to put it bluntly, pissed off that why are we even meeting tonight? We should be meeting next Monday night after the meeting with the DOT to give us a better clarification. And so we might actually have to come back and change this once again if, if we, you know, get a different idea from what the DOT says on, on Thursday night, so. But I think we need to give the developer a direction. It doesn't mean that we're approving any TIF. I, I think they would be fully, foolish to think that we're going to approve TIF money for this, but I think they have to at least have something to go to the DOT with, so I would recommend that, you know, we approve this right in, right out at this point.
And just to add on that, this still has to go into council in two weeks, so we'll be having a meeting in between with the DOT, so if something were to change between now and then, the council would have the ability to do whatever they so choose, but I think this issue is kind of separate from what the DOT is talking about on the other ones anyway, but that's just my opinion, and I could be wrong about that. Go ahead, Alder Person Trul.
I would answer, one, one other direct answer to your question, and I don't mean this to sound as egotistical as it's going to sound, but what's changed from the first time we came up? It was me. I said, I, I, you know, I didn't think we were ready to take, take action on it that night, and I figured we were, a week later, we were going to deal with the TIF, and we'd roll it all up, and referring it for a week wasn't going to make a difference. If it, if we hadn't had the TIF discussion, I thought, coming right behind it, I probably would have pushed, pushed to take action that night and gotten direction. So, I, I mean, I, I think you're, you're right about what you're asking, Mike, about, about, you know, overall conditions, but I, but I think in terms of just, you know, one way or another, let's give them, let's give them direction, go up or down at this point, and, and if it's up, then we can go see what they come up with, with DOT, and, and we can, we can keep moving forward. If it's down, then they'll have a different direction, and, and we'll, we'll have to deal with whatever those circumstances are.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, the mayor, and then Mike.
Thank you. What I was going to say is, you know, you've said it tonight already, that tonight's question isn't a TIF question, that we're going to talk about on the 26th. Tonight's question is, will the council be satisfied with a right in, right out as that required intersection with Oak Opening and Highway 138? Council President Swadley and Planning Director Sheal and I heard from the DOT when we went and talked to them before, at the staff level, they're not in favor of a roundabout. They could be in favor of a right in, right out, and whether we're comfortable with that decision or not, it's ultimately the DOT's decision, as I mentioned earlier and we learned that night, there are people that, that's what they do, they study intersections, and they study what's the best way to move traffic, and they study how that, how that works in a, in a development or in a stretch of highway like 138 and 151 here in Stoughton. So it's ultimately their decision, it is, it's not a local road. So what's different is that the question is not a TIF one tonight, but it's, it's an access question, are you comfortable with a right in, right out? And that's the only question for tonight.
Okay, you're going to defer, okay, so Alder Person Kittleson.
Okay, totally understand it's not a TIF question. They've gone to the DOT, the staff there feels comfortable with a right in, right out, majority of the people here feel comfortable with a right in, right out, why do we have to move any farther with this? I mean, technically, you, you've said it, that the staff feels comfortable, people here feel comfortable, so why don't we just cut to the chase then?
Uh huh.
And then go to, on the thing on the 27th and really talk about that.
Well, if I may, the cut to the chase would be the vote to recommend that, because according to our resolution, Resolution 129 of 2016, the developer must provide a connection of Oak Opening Drive to Highway 138, that, that's, that's been resolved to the city's satisfaction. And if the majority here are comfortable, then we need to make that motion, that, that the majority here is comfortable, or that however many are comfortable, and move it on to that next discussion, in my opinion.
And the other part of that is, the staff isn't necessarily represented on the access board. I don't even know who's on that board. I asked Rodney that, do you know who's on the access board, or when they meet?
I've described it before as being a nebulous group of administrators within the DOT. I do think the staff person that we were working with is integral to the, the board, the access board.
But the board, you know, just like us or any other board, could have their own ideas in spite of what the staff and what we may present them, so we have to go through the process in order to get a decision by those that are, have the authority to make that decision. And the staff doesn't have that alone. Go ahead, Alder Person Trul.
And to that point, I think, I, I can't imagine that the developers aren't looking to be able to take this resolution with them to say the city is, this is what the city is signing off on. I mean, I think that's, to me, that's the biggest difference. The rest has been discussion, it's, it'll give them a chance to actually take it and have a formal, formal request, and say, you know, the council's on board with this.
Go ahead, thank you. Three times, we've had this come before us, and three times we said, go back to the DOT and, and let us know what they'll allow us to do. That hasn't been done, as far as I understand. I'm going to ask for a, a table until we, I have approval from DOT, like the other three times that this has come before us, and I'm going to ask for a vote on that.
So that's, that's a motion to table.
That's a motion.
All right, is there a second?
Is that, first of all, is there already a motion on the floor? A motion is table, it supersedes that.
This is an amendment, I'm sorry.
Well, the main motion is to recommend approval of the resolution. Now I, there's a motion to table the main motion until...
Till we, same, same information we had the last three times, till we get information from DOT what they're going to approve.
So that's the, that's the motion?
Okay.
Was there a second?
Kittleson.
There's a second, okay. All right, and I don't believe we can discuss a table, can we?
No.
Nope.
Okay, all right, so we'll take the vote, all in favor of table and say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No. I would say the no's have it, I, we can do a roll call.
Do a roll call.
Okay.
Yes.
Swadley.
No.
Boersma.
No.
Lawrence.
No.
Mieske.
Hi.
Engelberger.
Hi.
Jensen.
No.
Trul.
No.
O'Connor.
No.
Bartlett.
No.
Olson.
No.
Hirsch.
No.
Motion failed a three to nine.
Okay, so we're back to our original motion? Anybody have anything else on that? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call. Oh, pardon me? Sorry, I didn't see you.
I'm going to vote no for this in, in specifically two reasons. One, really disturbed that we're going to vote on something, that property owners that are going to be directly affected by it have absolutely no ideas coming. Nobody from staff talked about it, nobody from the developer talked about it, nobody's talked to them at all. So this is going to be really great for them when they see it, when they see it in the hub that, by the way, they're going to have this like major change in their lifestyle, and nobody told them anything about it. We're really good at that, aren't we? Second thing everyone else has looked at, I, I totally understand that, yeah, they need direction to some point, but they have direction. Get an intersection out there, you know, they're, they're playing this, this game of, well, we could, we can't, we can, we can't, we could, because they're playing with staff, they're doing whatever. When they get it settled, let's do it. Until that point in time, we're just wasting time. Right in, right out, it's a useless intersection. It's, it's not going to get you much. I'm sure everybody who's leaving, people who are going to be going out of that development are just going to be going to Oregon, not coming back into town, and it's, it's a bad idea.
Okay, Alder Person Lawrence?
No, I guess I'll, I won't comment.
Alder Person Engelberger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I completely agree with Alder Mieske, and that's the reason that I asked for the table, but that didn't pass, so I'm going to have to vote no on this as well.
Alder Person Lawrence?
Well, I guess I will comment.
You're allowed to do that.
I did, thank you, yeah, I can't help myself, is what I, well, I just, my only comment is, of course, that this is really just a recommendation to council, and it doesn't really do anything other than that, it's just sending a message on to council for a future meeting for us to consider it at that time.
Okay, anybody else? All right, we'll try for the third time. We're going to do a roll call.
Hirsch.
Hi.
Kittleson.
No.
Swadley.
Bye.
Excuse me, Boersma.
Hi.
Lawrence.
Hi.
Mieske.
No.
Engelberger.
No.
Jensen.
Hi.
Trul.
Hi.
O'Connor.
Hi.
Bartlett.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Motion carries on a vote of nine to three.
Move to adjourn.
Second. There's a motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Not opposed. Thank you very much.